Welcome, everyone. And I will call to order the Mortem Education Meeting for Milton School District as Monday, December 12. And we will start, as usual, with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Downing, are you aware of any changes to our agenda? There are no changes to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve our agenda. Questions on it? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Action on the minutes from our previous meeting.
I would move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 28, 2022, as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by John, to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any questions on the minutes? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. And vouchers is next, of course.
I make a motion to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $1,098,442.22, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve our checking vouchers in the amount he just enumerated. Questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Vouchers are approved. Student council report. Mesa and Holly, welcome. Share the good news from 114 High Street.
Hello. Lately, student council has had two main focuses. The first is donations for the Shining Star Program. Wednesday after school, a few members will be going to pick up items for donation. The second topic the student council has been focusing on was the SEL survey result.
We started discussing the results of the survey at our last meeting on Thursday, and it came to our knowledge that the questions had different interpretations and that most of the neutral answers were classified as unfavorable responses. And regardless of these possible discrepancies, with what was considered unfavorable as a result of three, like the three on the survey that we can choose, we found the results very shocking. And so, as a student council, we're going to plan to reach out to students outside of our council as well and get some more input. And then, as well, we're going to plan on improving the school climate and trying to increase that sense of belonging at Milton High School. And maybe we'll keep you guys updated as we talk about it in more of our meetings. That's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. A public comment. When I looked, there was no one signed up. Would you check, please, Rich? Okay. So we will move on. And that brings me back to Rich, because, too, the superintendent update, right, our highlights?
Couple things that I want to highlight. It is winter concert season. So students and staff have been working hard to prepare for concert season. I want to highlight both recent and upcoming performances at our different schools. Congratulations to both Consolidated and Milton East, who recently performed their winter sing concerts. So students and staff have been working really hard and should be very proud of the work that they've put into it. So those are two schools that have completed theirs. And then, coming up this week, grades six through eight will perform tomorrow night at the high school in PAC. Milton West, second and third grade will perform on Wednesday at Milton West. And our high school choirs will perform on Thursday at the PAC. Northside Sixth Grade Choir and Band will perform Friday morning at the Northside Gym. So a busy week this week for different concerts coming up. And then, next week, the Milton High School Band will perform their concert on Monday, the 19th. And the sixth through eighth grade band will perform on Tuesday, the 20th. We welcome community members to attend the different concerts. And again, want to thank our music staff for all the hard work that they put in to get ready for these concerts and our students for putting their talents on display. So it's an exciting time of year for those, for students and staff with our winter concerts. At Northside, we had the Noetic Math Contest that took place back in November. We got results back on that. It's a national competition that's used to provide enrichment opportunities for students and a chance for them to help develop their problem-solving skills. Students are asked to solve 20 problems without the use of a calculator in 50 minutes. And I would probably say that four of the students at Northside who participated received honorable mention, which makes it base score in the top 50% of the students who participated nationwide. There are nearly 5,600 fifth graders that participated nationally. And special congratulations to fifth grader Brandon Tan, who was named in the National Honor Roll for having scored in the top 10% of those 5,600 students. So congratulations to all the students that participated. And congratulations again to Brandon for finishing in the top 10%. Milton High School is conducting or coming up is its Reality Check Financial Literacy Event. And as part of our commitment to preparing for students to be lifetime-ready after graduation, this Reality Check event provides hands-on experience for high school students to test or to practice their budgeting skills, gain insight into career selection, and get a practical glimpse on the realities of postgraduate life. We want to thank our community and businesses and volunteers who helped create these opportunities for students and interaction with students. There is a need for more volunteers if folks are interested. If you are interested, you can reach out to Amy Cannon at Milton High School or check the district's Facebook page, the link to sign up. And then, lastly, coming up on Friday this week, we have two former Red Hot Wrestling coaches, Bob Johnson and Dan Pranat, have been inducted into the Wrestling Coaches Hall of Fame, and they will be honored at Friday's Home Wrestling Meet coming up at Milton High School. So it'll be an exciting event. Prior to the event, I'm going to be doing one of my chat and cheers with the superintendent, starting at 6:30, so we encourage community members to come out and attend that. Looking forward to meeting with the community, wrestling fans, sharing highlights of things that are happening in the district, just having a conversation with pros, and then having a chance to go in and cheer on the Red Hot Wrestlers and congratulate our former coaches that have been inducted into the Hall of Fame. Some great things happening and coming up across our district.
Excellent. Any questions for Rich?
Rich, where is that chat and cheers? Right in the comments there?
To those in the comments.
All right, very good. We will move on. Three on the agenda is a committee report. We had a joint committee meeting of our strategic planning and finance committees, and actually, I had the entire board present for that workshop. And we are going to split that. And I believe Jennifer will handle the first part, which is discussion and possible action on the operations and facilities pillar, goals, and focus areas.
I don't have access to it, so I'm just going to... As Joe mentioned, we did meet as a group, and we had one of the remaining pillars of our strategic plan left to work through. And so, we have set... Yeah, so we have set the goals and focus areas for the actual strategic goal, and it's called operations and facilities. And... Did you want your...
You got it.
Oh, perfect. Right, some... So again, there was much discussion because it was a joint meeting. We did focus heavily on, again, the financial piece of this pillar. And I think the board has agreed in the language that we have as it relates to our goal. It's measurable. We were really focused on getting a smart goal. And then, there are actually four different focus areas. And the group felt like we were definitely making sure that we were highlighting and addressing the variety of different, I guess, focus areas that are included in the operations and facilities. So not just buildings and grounds, but overall, we came up with kind of the word of resources as a whole itself.
And that item is an action item if the board is interested in approving the focus of goal for that pillar and the four focus areas. Is there anyone on the board that the board doc's being a little wonky? Do board members appreciate those being read? Or are we familiar enough with them from the conversation from all the tents out there? And we have them posted on the screen.
Mine happened to come up that Jennifer was bawling, so I agree that if folks wanted, otherwise, we can... We were all there, participated, so I think it's pretty familiar to most of us. So if your folks are... If you don't want to be redundant and read it, you can adopt it as it is. But it is, like Mitch mentioned, an action item. It will complete our strategic planning update. It was the fifth of the five pillars that we needed to work on.
I would move to approve the operations, operations and facility pillar, goals and focus areas, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. That is a motion from Dave, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our last pillar of the strategic plan. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for that. The second piece of the committee report will be done by Mike, who chairs our finance committee, and that will be relative to some budget planning exercise that was involved with that.
Thanks, Joe. I know, as Jen mentioned, on November 30th, the finance committee, not along with the strategic planning committee, to discuss budget planning. As you know, while we have a balanced budget for this year, it is our job to be forward-looking and make sure our expected expenditures meet our expected revenues moving ahead beyond just this year. We also know that a little bit more than 80% of our revenues are controlled by state-imposed revenue caps over which we have no say or input. Finally, we are all aware that inflation is something that we are all dealing with, and of course, the effects are also felt by the district. So without further ado, I will turn things over to Carrie Bradley. And as always, we will welcome questions and or comments at the end of your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I see we have on one screen, the slides are available. And if you recall at the last meeting, we looked at our revenue outlook, and we looked at using the revenue limit calculation with flat FTE. So at this meeting, we're going to revisit that topic and layer in the expenditures. So if you go to the next slide, please. All right. So our reminder that when we're doing our budget planning, it's the financial plan used to implement our district's educational operational activities. Again, we use estimates, and we use assumptions. And our assumptions are refined over time. So as we start the process, we're going to work with our current enrollment and then our full-time equivalency that's used to calculate revenue limit and state aids. We're going to project that to be flat so that we avoid the ups and downs of some of those other assumptions. So in the meantime, I'm working on those calculations and we're mindful of them. But as we work through this, we want to start with a flat FTE. We also need to remember that the current budget that we have includes the on-time COVID funds. And as we move forward, we're going to increase current expenditure budget for inflation. If you go to the next slide, the next slide is a reminder, and it goes to what Mike spoke about, and also just the emphasis that we need to understand that the revenue limit controls about 83% of our revenue. We had talked about the per pupil categorical aid, which is also driven by student full-time equivalencies as well as the revenue limit. So that's a significant amount of our operating resources that are controlled by the revenue limit. And since they are, we want to have an understanding... If you go to the next slide, please. Of how that FTE impacts our resources. So that slide is our current average, which is a three-year average, and then it is projected forward. So since it's a three-year average, if I take our current FTE and forecast some flat moving forward, that three-year average is going to level out. And you can see, beginning in '21, '22, we had 3,466 FTE, and we dropped to 3,430 for '22, '23. And then, that drop will continue as we project that forward. And so, one of the things that I'm focusing on in our conversations is what happens to our base revenue when our FTE goes down. And so, I brought back a slide... If you go to the next one, that we talked about last time, but I moved through it very quickly. And so, I would like the opportunity to kind of move through it again and spend a little bit more time on it because this is how the revenue limit is reacting to... The calculation is reacting to our enrollment going down. And then, this also shows what happens when we talk about the per pupil increase that we have talked about. So the first arrow there shows us that the base revenue is our starting point. And that is essentially to calculate our base revenue per member. We take our base from the prior year, divided by that prior year membership, to get that $10,048 this year. Then, that $10,048 this year was not increased. It was zero. We have a projection then with kind of maintaining that flat frozen revenue. And then, we also have one that increases it by $250. So if you're on the change of any arrow, that's where I'm walking across. And then, what the calculation does is it takes that 10,000 projected... 10,088 or 10,338, times that new three-year FTE calculation. So when we talk about increasing $250 per FTE, that's not based on this year's FTE, that's based on next year's FTE. The other thing that the formula does, where I have that dollar times FTE, or dollar for FTE, times FTE, the third arrow down, there is also a hold harmless that is built into the formula. And you need to think of that hold harmless as a one-time exemption, if you will. We talked about those non-recurring exemptions. This is similar. So if our base drops less than the prior year after it's been calculated, there's a one-time backfill. And so, that's just another layer of what happens in the formula when we do the calculation. So that when we get to the end, we see that the revenue limit or that... And we saw that in the charts, right? We're on a downward trend. So... And then, just one comment on the per pupil amount. It might be a long one, but it's... You just need to be mindful of... When we talk about that, my understanding, when the formula was put together, is it was designed to account for the increase in inflation. So you're still going to have the per-member calculations. But the idea is that school districts would have increasing resources that would align with the CPI, more or less. And so, I looked up the history of that number. It started at about $200, and it went as high, increasing incrementally to $275 in the fall of 2008. And then, it went down. And then, it has been as low as... It was over $500 negative one year as the state was responding to budget concerns. So the thing to understand about the revenue limit is that there are ways that it can be used to help support districts in keeping pace with inflation. But the formula is also designed to control property taxes. So depending upon the level of state resources committed to education, the formula is used then to control property taxes. So do you have any questions about this slide before I go on?
Carrie, I know that we've talked about it, and I understand it, but I want to make sure that people listening, either in the audience or at home, understand the current law is zero versus what you have in the $250. Could you just talk a little bit about where those come from?
Sure. So when you do projections or we're going to start using the three scenarios, a common place to start for me is what does the current law say? Because if the legislature, when they go through the biennial budget process, take no action, we're going to be at current law. So for me, that's always the starting point. And current law right now is frozen or zero, right? So the first example is what's going on now? And if no action is taken, where will we be? And then, the other thing is, you know, what do we want to be our next step? I actually did several other numbers, but it was a lot of information. And so, the $250 was landed on as a possibility, right? It's a possibility. It's not necessarily probable or potential. But what I wanted to do was to demonstrate a range so that you can see the impact on the budget. And so, that $250 kind of hit that reasonability for a figure to use without sharing with you all the increments I did in between. So kind of knowing that that got picked for our conversation purposes and that we can also use... And I have used other figures as well. But I thought it's a good endpoint to land on.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, could you also explain when we'll know what that number actually is? Just so people are aware.
Sure. Good point. So when we talk about the state budget building process, it typically begins in the winter and hopefully concludes at the beginning of July or in July. There have been years where we have actually gone... I think the latest is about October. But the pattern lately has been to be more timely. So as we wait for those firm numbers, right? Or as we wait for the conversation to unfold, where we might believe something that would give us an estimate, then this is the estimate that we're using. And again, part of it is to kind of show the range, not so much that this is what they're going to do, but I need a range to work in as we look at the figures. Okay? Thank you for the question. All right. So our next step then, if you remember, we looked at revenues last time. And on this slide, the revenue's at the gray bar. And I pretty much took the presentation from last time with the current law and no change in that per pupil amount. And then, that's the gray bar. And then, I took our current year's budget and increased it by 3% to do our inflationary modification. And so, you can see with no changes in the formula, not only in the next biennium, but the biennial after, because that assumption is carried all the way through, then we will have the increasing gap between our revenues and our expenditures. And then, the... If you go to the next slide, then that's where I did the what-if. And that increases the revenue limit, the first student FTE, which we also call per pupil and also per member. So these three terms are being used interchangeably. And I just need to be mindful of that. So then, we did the what-if. The revenue were to increase the next four years by that $250 per student. And you can see that the expenditures will still continue to outpace the revenues when we run through that scenario. And the drop in 2006... Sorry. 2006, '27 is when our 2.5 million non-recurring recruitment drops off. So then, the other... The last graph we got basically is taking the two scenarios, right? The purple is current law. And then, the teal or green is if there is an increase in the revenue limit. And so, then you can see that when we layer in the inflationary budget increase of 3%, that kind of even if we get the increase of the $250 that I've had for a range, expenses are still going to outpace revenues. And then, the last slide, some of this you've seen before, and then some of what we're, again, adding on or layering in. And again, the impact of the revenue limit on our resources in the general fund is significant. The legislative, what the legislature does, and the governor or the state government, do those have a direct impact on our future revenues and resources. We, like everybody else, are experiencing higher than normal inflationary pressures. So that's the environment we're in. We're also experiencing greater competition for staff in that environment. And as I said, even if we get an increase in the revenue limit of the $250, our revenues are not likely to keep pace with these current inflationary pressures. And the last note is that we have a finance committee meeting set up on January 24 to continue exploring this topic. And that's all I have.
So I guess just a couple of comments to, I guess, essentially reinforce Carrie's and the things she says. You know, at the end of the day, we're going to need to craft our next budget while knowing what the state's budget is going to look like. Regardless, in the no-change projection and the increase of $250 per FTE amount, in both cases, we project the deficits. And we know our expenses are going to go up in 3%. Might be a conservative estimate of that. We have no indication that we have any additional revenue to support either the growth from that or just simply covering the projections that are here. That certainly is unsustainable. And, you know, A, what are some options to go along with that? I think something that has to be on the radar because at the end of the day, we all expect to have college schools, and we do that, we have the resources to support them. I know we don't have an answer for that today, but the issues that are essentially not debated at this point today, the numbers are what they are. And to create a plan that has some sustainability on it, I think is imperative for us at this point in time.
Yeah. Anybody else with any questions or comments for Carrie?
Carrie, I'm wondering if you could go back to the bar graph where it includes the $250 per student?
The surplus, that one?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Charlie. I'm wondering if you could explain, even with $250 per student, and there's reasons for this, but so that everyone understands it, is why the revenues are still going to go down from the 2022, '23 year to the 2023, '24 years? Because I think that's really important for people to understand.
And as we started the conversation, part of that is around the decline in our student FTE. And part of it is around the calculation and the impact of the harmless as it gets to calculation.
Plus, you have some money.
The formula is complex. And if it's built around increasing, then it's going to behave differently than it is built around inflation. Yes, Rich?
What Mike just shared is an important part of that. Built into our revenues for the current year are the one-time asset funds that are being used to balance the budget. So if you look at the graph... So if you look at the graph, the plot of that column for 22, 23, our revenue and our expenses are balanced, but a reminder that in order to have those balanced, about $900,000 of this law is made up of that one-time asset fund. So that if you take $900,000 off the top of that, and then you look at the changes that Carrie just described, is where, puts us here. So, very good question.
Thank you, Mitch.
All right, anyone else?
Well, I think I would join the committee chairs in thanking Rich and Carrie and the folks that work with Carrie, generate all of those numbers and data, because we can't make intelligent decisions without the right information at our fingertips. And I want to applaud the entire board for the workshop-like atmosphere we had with this joint meeting. I think it was incredibly productive in identifying what path we've got in front of us.
And to circle back to Dave, Dave had a question at the end of his comments, were around different options that we have, because you can see that both in the short term and in the long term, there's some budget planning that we're going to need to do as a district. And we really have a history as a high-achieving, low-revenue school district, and in order to maintain that high-quality education for all students, we need to balance that with being fiscally responsible for our, to our community and our taxpayers. As we shared earlier, and a really important takeaway for this is, these are somewhat optimistic projections. We don't know that the state is going to provide an additional $250 per pupil, and we don't know that we'll be able to keep expenses at that 3% per year with inflation running much higher than that. What we do know is that even with legislative projections that we're using here, increasing revenues aren't anticipated to keep up with the inflationary pressures. So that's leading to that, the expenditures going down more quickly than revenues creates that gap. That would lead to the need for somewhat significant reductions in our expenses if there isn't any other action taken. It's important for us to have a balanced budget. We have some fund balance, but fund balance money is kind of treated like one-time money, because once it's spent, it's not there anymore. So as we look at those gaps between projected expenses and projected revenues, we have to take a look at all kinds of different options to address that, hopefully short term and the long term. As we shared earlier, we do have a finance committee scheduled for January 4th. If the board would like, Carrie and I can put together some different, different potential scenarios on ways to address this, both in the short term and the long term moving forward. Bring those to the finance committee on the fourth for board discussion, and then bring that discussion to the full board at the first board meeting in January, whether it was January or not.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good way to proceed. I think we can talk about the reality, sort of go in face, but it's only as an alternative to what we can do entirely, make a plan, right? And as I look through, kind of studying for this meeting and looking through my own mental what ifs, certainly, we could make cuts of the things, and it doesn't seem like the best first plan for us to consider, so, yeah, having some alternatives for that meeting, I think would be important to file.
Yep, I would think so. Anyone else? If not, I will repeat my thank you to Carrie and her folks and to Rich for generating all the relevant data. All right, we will move along for as an HR committee report from Mr. Rick.
Thanks, Joe. HR committee met last week on December 7th. First item on the agenda was helpful insurance benefits and future options. The committee reviewed the November 16th benefits advisory group meeting, which included information about the budget, and we also had a discussion about the employee wellness unit. We reviewed the number of active employees selecting health insurance and related benefits. We also discussed a reminder about the HR plan design changes for 2023 to 24 year, which will include an extra $250 employee responsibility due to the action before took last spring, which was a difference of one year only. We discussed the health insurance premium district contribution changes. Some future topics that we discussed, or potential future topics, were a wellness differential and a flat dollar amount district contribution. We're also looking at on the post-employment health insurance, the HR committee discussed engaging in a process to learn more about the other post-employment benefits and consider options to meet district goals. The committee will continue to discuss this process, which will eventually engage the full board and include opportunities for feedback from key benefits advisory group laws. Any questions on any of this? Chris, anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Next was employee handbook updates. The HR team is currently continuing to review the handbook draft that will be coming back to the committee for review and eventually to back to the entire board for approval with an effective date of July 1st, 2023. So there'll be more info on that in the coming months. Any questions on that? And the last item was the 2022 and 23 contract letters of employment and letter of appointment timeline. There's a draft of this in board docs, and Chris also passed one out, in case you weren't able to access that. This has the information regarding all of the different employee groups and the timeline for what will happen in the spring, all the work done by the HR team, so thanks in advance to them for all of that. And so those are the dates, that would be awesome. Any questions on any of that? Okay, we also, we did meet an executive session briefly regarding the superintendent evaluation, and more on that later in, again, the executive session.
Go ahead. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kupendorf.
Thank you.
All right, that'll push us down to five, which is new business, with one item relative to a real estate issue, and I'm assuming that Rich and Stephen are going to tag-team this, and we will start with Stephen.
Sure. So, yeah, thank you. Two board meetings ago, we brought this potential sale of district property to the board, and over the last month or so, we worked with our legal counsel and worked with the buyers of the property to iron out the final details of the transaction. The details are in the board docs, or the offer to purchase, and I outlined, highlighted up in the memo. Basically, it's a small piece of land just to the north of where we're at right now for our neighbors here at Goodrich Hall. They have the ability then to construct a garage that would connect to Goodrich Hall itself. Property that belongs to the district currently has no real short-term or long-term value to us, so it really didn't matter for us, and it was a good neighborly thing to do to work with them to kind of make this happen. So with board approval tonight, it would allow Rich to move forward with signing the documents and closing, and close as soon as a final survey is completed. That would incorporate that small piece of property into their official piece of land, and then they can proceed with their construction project. So that's the kind of the long and the short of it. Any questions that you guys have about the details of it?
Yeah, thank you, Phil. Thanks, Stephen. Two quick things that I want to make sure people are aware of, too. Carrie has up on the screen a diagram of where that property is. As you look at the parking lot, the building that we're sitting in is on the bottom side of that picture, just below the parking lot. And then if you look out across the parking lot, you will see Goodrich Hall, and then the small rectangular parcel thing is just outside of that on the other side. Stephen did a great job of working with our lawyer, who works with items like this, and with, and we also worked with the potential buyer's lawyer on all of the paperwork and the discussions. When districts sell property, there are things that we need to make sure we have in place. This, as Stephen shared earlier, isn't really a piece of property that we as a district would be interested in selling to someone who isn't involved in the owner of that adjacent property for some other purpose, though we have had conversations with them to make sure that the purpose that they're planning to use this property for doesn't interfere with our ability for smaller renewal or any other type of maintenance on our property that would be adjoining this area.
I think the other thing that's worth noting is, you know, we discussed how the value is determined then, the market analysis was done to come up with what is the fair market value for, roughly 1,700 square feet of land, so...
Thanks for bringing that up. I did mean to mention that, that our attorney took a recent property sale on Lake Rogers Street, and he quoted that at a cost per square foot to get a fair purchase price that we would have to get at first to extend your printing land that we sell, so, yeah, thank you.
And so, you know, in light of things Rich said about it, really, this transaction won't affect anything of the district or evaluation out of what Stephen, thank you for doing. I would move to authorize the sale by the district of approximately 0.04 acres of vacant land within tax parcel D-23-991a. City of Milton, under the terms and conditions of vacant land offered for purchase of Nicholas and Angel Yohannick, dated November 4th, 2022, is approved. District administrator is authorized to execute and deliver such vacant land offered for purchase in all closing documents requiring appropriate contemplation and transaction provided essential for...
I'll second that. I'm not sure that's the longest motion we've ever had, that's close. It was listed as about long.
If you don't think we have an attorney involved, there's...
So I'll not repeat it. It is obviously in board docs for all of you and whatnot, so. On a motion from Dave, seconded by John, to execute this land transaction, is there any discussion on the motion? Then all in favor of approval of that motion, signify with aye, please. Aye. And opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes. All right, thank you, Stephen. And six is up to our standard miscellaneous things, A is the action on the staffing report.
I move to approve the staffing report presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our staffing report. Any questions on it? All in favor of approval, signify with aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Gifts and donations are next.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations prepared too.
I will second that and congratulate the Milton Fishing Club on all of their donations. Yeah, motion from Jennifer, seconded by John, and I would just point out that the gift and donations totaled $15,339 from our generous community, so thanks to all of those folks. Questions on the gifts? All in favor of approval, signify with aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Meeting dates, Mr. Don.
With the upcoming holidays, we only have one regularly scheduled board meeting in December, so this, the next time that we need for community or board meetings are scheduled for January. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, January 9th, at the regular time, 6:30, in the regular location, here at District Office in EDC. We have two finance committee meetings scheduled for January to continue the conversation about budget planning. The first is on January 4th, that is at noon, here at District Office in the first floor conference room. And then the second finance committee meeting is on January 11th, that also is at noon, here at District Office and also in the first floor conference room. So finance committee meetings, January 4th and January 11th, all that at noon on those dates. We're looking at, we talked earlier about a possible policy committee meeting, but we're going to hold off until into the new year to schedule that.
All right, so we have a proposed executive session here, which I will read in a moment, and Rick had indicated that the content would be around the board talking about the superintendent evaluation. As such, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session subject to section, state statute, section 19.85, sub 1, sub C, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Don't move. Seconded. Thank you. Move and seconded, Rick and Dave. We will call a vote. Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joe is yes.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
We are in executive session. You do not have any action, or you will not be returning to the other session.